Good evening and welcome to the June 18th, 2025, a meeting of the Lower Makefield Township Board of Supervisors. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a quick roll call. Supervisor Blundy.
Here.
Supervisor Ross.
Here.
Supervisor Lewis.
Here.
And Supervisor McCartney.
Present.
Community announcements. Reminder during this portion of the agenda, residents and youth organizations may call in to make a special announcement or contact the township at admin@lmt.org to request a special announcement be added to the agenda. On Saturday, July 12th, at 9:00 a.m., friends at Five Mile Woods are looking for volunteers to help with Five Mile Woods cleanup. If you have some free time and would love to volunteer, we would love your help. Please come in comfortable clothes that you don't mind getting dirty and bring along your work gloves in the water to stay hydrated. LMT pool events. Monday, June 23rd, the pool opens full-time. Please be sure to get your membership if you haven't already. Visit lmt.org for more information. Thursday, June 26th, the pool is hosting a Schools Out for the Summer Bash, tween night, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Open at all tweens, ages 11 to 14. No membership is required, but there will be a $15 charge for all non-members. Friday, July 4th, Tuesday, Wednesday, celebration from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. for members only. Sunday, July 13th, is Family Fun Day, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. for members only. And Monday, July 14th, August pool membership sales are open. To register again, visit lmt.org. Let's see. One other announcement. Today was, I believe, the last day for most of our Pittsburgh students, so happy summer. You made it through another school year. Nice job. Any other announcements by any other board members? No? All right. It's our community announcements. Next up is item number five, public comment on non-agenda items. So if you have a comment on something that's not on the agenda, now is the time when you can come up to the podium and make your comment or speak online if you're online. Just a reminder to state your name, whether or not you're township resident. Keep your comments to three minutes as best you can. And anything else? I think we're good. Any public comment? All right. No public comment here either. Let's have enjoying the nice weather. Let's see. Consent agenda items.
Mr. Chair, I approve that. I move that we approve the consent agenda items as is.
Second.
All right. Any comment? Comment? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Community development. Consider Resolution Number 25-11 relating to Dogwood Drive sanitary sewer landing module. This went before the planning commission. They recommended the approval at their last meeting. Anything that we need to present?
I don't know if Jim Majewski is on the line. I think he was going to call in just to provide a
All right. Why don't we let him in? Mr. Majewski, can you hear us?
Good evening. You may recall this project, the Dogwood Drive subdivision, is a five-lot subdivision on Dogwood Drive, which comes off of Delaware Rim Drive in the northeastern part of the township. In addition to providing service to the five lots proposed as part of the subdivision, they're also providing stubs to non-existing homes that they pass along the way that are currently serviced by individual on-lot septic systems. This approval will certify capacity for the project. It's been reviewed by Ebert Engineering, and we recommend that the Section J of the form be signed and approved by the township.
Any motion?
No moved.
Second.
All right. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Majewski. Thought he'd be at the pool tonight. That's good. We received the engineer's report. The engineers in the audience, if you have any questions, but otherwise. Open up to any board questions or comments? All right. Right along. So our number nine is our manager's report. First item is a discussion related to the DCED multimodal transportation fund application for the Taylorsville Road sidewalk and drainage improvements project. That's also what we refer to as the Taylorsville sidewalk that's in front of Mapleville. Just
That is, that is correct. Mr. Chair, members of the board, just wanted to just quickly make a note. You know, as, as the township submitted an application to this program for this project, the last round, as you know, we received partial funding. We had made a request of, I believe it was close to $2.3 million. We had received 500 and, or it might have been two and a half million dollars. We had received about $550,000 as part of the prior funding round. So we are in the process of, of working on resubmitting the application as part of this, this, this funding round. There will be a resolution for your consideration at, at a future meeting. But just wanted to make you aware that staff is working on this application for resubmission and reconsideration to try to receive some of the additional, some additional funding in order to advance the project. I just wanted to make note of that.
What's the due date on that, on that application?
That one is due at the end of July, I believe. Let me see.
If we have a July 16th meeting, we still have time to
We, we have time, yes. Yep.
And just for, for those watching at home, we've been talking about this particular sidewalk I don't know, maybe August of '23-ish? Where the goal for the sidewalk isn't just the sidewalk that would connect the northern part of town to Hardly Borough's North Main Street project that should be starting construction again, I think, pretty soon and get everyone in the borough, but it also allows us to provide stormwater management along, along Taylorsville Road where there never has been any and which also allows for a big flood attenuation project, all built into the same thing for, for that entire part of town. Obviously, everyone remembers the flooding in Mapleville of July of '23 and other parts of town, but that's really our number one priority from a sidewalk perspective for the, for the foreseeable future until we're able to get it done. I know there's been some discussion about sidewalks, but there's a lot of history on this one. But, so I'm glad we're moving forward. It, it may take a couple of grant applications to get it done, but
Yeah, the, the applications are accepted through July 31st of '25. So, so we're good with the second meeting in July for consideration of the resolution to authorize the application. But again, staff is in the process of, of refreshing the application and is, will be prepared to, to be in a position to submit the application by that deadline.
All right. No action tonight?
Yeah, no. It was just, just to make you aware, again, with the cancel, cancellation or the, of the July 2nd meeting, just wanted to make you aware that that's something that's going to be coming forth. The next item is just simply an update as well. Again, this is on an item that the board had previously authorized us to work with HRG to obtain a proposal for the potential consideration and development of a stormwater utility fee. We are currently working through that proposal with HRG. There was an initial proposal that came, that they had prepared. Staff has reviewed that proposal. There was just some minor tweaks or suggested tweaks that, that that we were recommending for incorporation into the proposal. That is something also that should be back before you at your second meeting in July. So just wanted to give you a heads up and, and let you know that work is ongoing on that and continuing on that. And it's something that'll be back before you in the very near future.
Thank you. Looking forward to that one as well. Anything else?
I have nothing else. Supervisor Blundy, did you want to make just mention of the one item that's
Well, I, I want to take the mic and then throw it back at you. But, you know, as people are aware, I was really moved by the work at Five Mile Woods where we helped, volunteers helped build an accessibility ramp, thanks to a volunteer hours and a donation from PICO. And I believe we can share that PICO is coming through again. Passing it to Dave.
Sure. So yes, as Supervisor Blundy mentioned, we were a prior recipient of a PICO Green Region Award for the Five Mile Woods Trail Project. Again, trying to improve accessibility and access to that facility for users of all abilities. And so recognizing that a portion of that project was, was completed as prior, as part of the prior funding rounds. And PICO was very much supporter of the project. We have received another award through the program to be in a position to continue that. So we are receiving an additional $10,000 and staff is currently working with, working through the, the acquiring the supplies and mobilizing the volunteers and so forth. So there should be more to come, but we do appreciate PICO's support for this, you know, for this important community project. So thanks for mentioning it.
Absolutely. I mean, it's a great project. I will be there as always getting pizza because that's my value add. But, you know, people of all abilities can help on that project, so look forward to it.
Item number 10 is Public Works. Getting our hands dirty. Is
Yeah, Derek should be joining us also remotely.
Couldn't take the heat? Is that it? Mr. Fuller, can you hear us?
Yes. Good evening, supervisors. How are you this evening?
We're hot, Derek.
Hey, listen, listen. That's why I'm hiding from you. No. No, no, no. Thank you. So, so this evening I have item 10A in front of you for consideration would be consider the award of the 2025 road program contract to Paris Black Topping Incorporated for a total contract amount of $1,841,784.75. This is a budgeted item out of the road improvement fund of $2 million total budgeted amount for 2025. Board has any questions? Be glad to help. Answer them.
Derek, am I, is this, so this includes all bid alternates too, right?
Correct. So this is actually a, a very good number. So, yeah. So again, the engineer's estimate for this work was, I think, approximately 2.4, 2.5. Again, my paper estimate was 2.1, so at 1.8 million, it's, it's a very good price. All the, all the pricing came in very well. Our, our next bidder, again, we, we worked with them in the past also. They, they came in $2 million. So we, we are getting everything we needed to for this year. So it was, it's, it's a successful bid, in my, in my opinion. Yes.
Okay. Does this, I'll ask for Supervisor Blundy. Does this include the little reflector things?
Of course. Yeah. So I just wanted to double check. That has the reflective markings on, I believe it's Makefield Road and also Edgewood Road. Is, is both included with reflective markings in, in the center line. Any road that has the yellow painted stripe will have reflective markings. Yes.
All right. Anyone like to make a motion?
No moved.
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? All right. That being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next item?
Great. Thank you.
Is Mr. Herco here or is this just for us to discuss?
It's just for us to discuss. Derek, Derek, are you, you're going to take that one?
I think we lost him.
We may have lost him. Okay. So
I, 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 no, I'm here. They don't, they don't want me here. Okay, 10B. It'll be consider acceptance of the proposal from Jeff Herco in the amount of $7,600 for professional services relating to the demolition of the corn crib at Patterson Farm. Again, any questions, be glad to answer them, but as we all know, the corn crib obviously has, you know, with, with the heavy winds that we experienced in the spring, you know, unfortunately, it needs to be demolished at this time for safety factors. We, we, we're contracting with Jeff Herco, who is experienced in this realm in terms of selective demolition, I'll call it. So he will, he will help Public Works in terms of the lead abatement that's necessary with the tarping and things like that. And he will salvage any salvageable wood during the demolition process and, and store it for, for future use on, on the property if needed.
All right. Any, uh, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. I just want to let those watching at home wondering why we're doing this. I think the Patterson Farm Implementation Committee emailed us
They did, yes.
Yesterday, and I think they summed it up pretty well. I'll, I'll read it quickly. It says, "The Lower Makefield Township Patterson Farm Implementation Committee fully supports the demolition of the structure as consistent with the Patterson Farm Master Plan, which was unanimously approved in December 2023. As we know, during the planning process, the Satterthwaite Corn Crib was thoroughly evaluated and deemed beyond saving by the engineers and architects involved. Its removal was included in the master plan as a necessary step in preserving the integrity and safety of the site." So they, they, they also encourage a feasible salvage of any remaining historic timbers, which is part of this process with, with Mr. Herco. So I just want to make sure that was on the record. Otherwise, Mr. Herco was also involved in the, the 501(c)(3) Patterson Farm Preservation. I, I forget the name of exactly, but this, his involvement with that 501(c)(3) does not have any issue.
It's not much to a level of a conflict in this instance.
Excellent. Good. All right. That's all I had. I just wanted to clear all that stuff up and provide that information. All right. Any, no board comment? Public comment? Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Let's get that taken care of.
Thank you. We'll get on that.
Yep.
Item 10C, again, more of a general update. I know we have a lot of utility providers right now doing extensive amounts of right-of-way work in the township. I did provide via Dave, just kind of a general list of at least the major projects that we're aware of in terms of, you know, right-of-way permits. Again, I, I believe that was shared with the board, but be happy to go over anything. A couple key items, obviously American Water, they are still working on Makefield Road. They're doing water line replacement project. So again, that was in coordination with the township, again, to make sure they're not ripping up our brand new road. So they quickly is doing a water line replacement in the extent of our work zone of future milling, paving operations. They're about 60% complete, so they're, they're working on that. The other notable item would be Highland Drive. They're, they're well, they're working up in their, their well site up there doing some PFOS treatment improvements. The public would see obviously sewer connections going on out in the road. They needed to tie into the sewer main. When they were doing that, they saw some, obviously they discovered a water main leak, so that, that project grew a little bit more in the right-of-way for the public to see. Again, everything is repaired. Now it's just restoration would remain. They're going to wait until they're done their construction project. So the road is paved in that area and, and good and they're not going to destroy any pavement. Any questions with PA and American Water from any supervisors?
Derek, on the paving, is this a general question? Not about that?
Yeah, sure.
When, when PICO, PA Water, Aqua, whoever's in the, in the road is, and is trenching, are they consistently repaving? What is, what are they consistently repaving? In this case, it looks like they repaved half the road, you know, from center line to curb generally? What are we seeing generally around town?
So, so the way I currently, and again, I, I, there, in terms of an ordinance, there is not necessarily a, a written ordinance. The way I have our restoration standards written that I wrote about three years ago is that any road that is over five years old, we, we basically ask them to follow the, the PennDOT standards. So if they do a trench line in half the road over X amount of feet, they're required to repave half of the road. That, that they are penalized if the road is under the age of five years old and it gets worse and worse. So example, if, if the road was just paved last year, they need to mill and pave intersection, intersection. You know, they, even if they disrupt the two-by-two area, they have to mill and pave the entire road intersection, intersection. Because we just did it a year ago. And again, those, those, I'm using the word penalties loosely, but that, that increases up until the age of five until they can fall back on the PennDOT standards, which is kind of what you see. So that gas main work that took place in, I believe it was on Concord maybe in 2023, again, they ran gas main in half the road. So they repaved half the road. And that, again, due to the age of those roads, that's what, that's what's typical of PennDOT and it's kind of hard to ask for more when those roads were over 20 years old. Most of those ones were. Now, for example, this intersection improvement, just due to the extent of the work at the Highland Drive intersection, they are actually paving the entire intersection curb to curb. I believe it's 100 feet upstream and 100 feet downstream of the worksite. Again, so to make sure we don't have patchwork everywhere. So most of the utility providers are very understanding and, and understand that our needs need to be met. When we sink significant, I mean, we just, you know, $1.8 million in road paving, they get that and they understand. Again, there are, there are emergency circumstances that they do have to unfortunately dig up new roads with water main breaks and everything like that, but they, something just happened. Example, in, in, in Green Ridge on this list here, Green Ridge, PICO Gas just repaved that curb to curb for us because they did a gas main project. Unfortunately, American Water had a water main break, you know, one summer later, not even a year old. So now American Water will be repaving that section of road curb to curb because of what's the extent of work they had to do. So I know working with Dave, we're going to obviously solidify that in ordinance, but again, most of the utility providers understand the needs of the township. And again, we're, it's not uncommon for townships to have ordinances such as those.
Okay. So we got an ordinance coming up at some point for us to?
We, we probably should codify that, yes. That would be our general recommendation, yes.
Okay. We'll put an eye on that then. Excellent. And then Derek, one, one quick question. The University Drive area, there seem to be a lot of work. I couldn't tell if it was the cleaning out the storm sewers or if it was something in the road itself, but there's a lot of equipment out there with vac trucks and a bunch of other stuff. Is that us or is that somebody else?
So, so no. So again, under PICO, under this list, again, PICO is doing extensive works in the township. So not only are they doing distribution vegetation management, basically all throughout the township, which is them coming through and doing tree trimming. Again, PICO does, I know a lot of residents don't see or get the letters in the mail, but PICO does, because they provide us copies, that they're sending these out. PICO does notify any residents when they're doing tree trimming work, when they're doing underground system improvements, the residents are getting copies of the letter that the township gets a copy of also saying, hey, we, we provided these, these customers in the service area. But, um, so underground upgrades are taking place in the University Drive section, which would be Afton University. That would be on page two, which is that Woodborne 352 project. So that is, I'm sorry, yeah, Woodborne 352. So that is all underground electrical upgrades that's taking place. They're doing one, two, three, four, five sections of the township in underground upgrades.
All right. And I get, the only, the only other thing I say, and I know we do this, but to the extent that we can put this on the website or social media so people are aware in case they don't see.
Yeah. And I, I think the problem is, and we try, I'm talking to Dave, this, we can come out with a better, maybe we have a page for it because again, PICO pushes these updates out. I, I look for my emails. I think they pushed this out in February, right? And then it didn't start till May. So most residents aren't looking back two months to, to find out what's going on. But again, if they ever need questions or comments, feel free to reach out to Public Works. PICO does have a special customer liaison. It is the Gary Dolahan. That's on every letter that he's in charge of, you know, that customer relationship. If any customers have questions or what's PICO doing, or I have an issue with, you know, they didn't restore my grass properly, PICO does request they reach out to Gary Dolahan. That's what his job is.
All right. Any other question from the board? Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you supervisors.
All right. Item number 10, this is the listener's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The minutes shall reflect that the supervisors present this evening met in executive session immediately prior to this meeting to discuss employment matters, litigation matters, and real estate matters. My report is short. Last evening I attended the zoning hearing board at your request and just like to report and I think Supervisor Blundy will state that the zoning hearing board appreciates our attendance. However, at last night's meeting, if anybody tuned in, there was a request that the supervisors actively look for replacement members for the zoning hearing board. One of the members is moving in August, so that creates an automatic vacancy. And I don't believe they have any alternates or any alternates that have been participants in the past, at least as far, as long as I've been attending meetings.
We got a letter of interest today.
Good.
And we have several of the folks we interviewed maybe of interest as well. We just have to sit down now and I know we appointed a bunch of them recently, but we still have more that haven't been appointed. So there may be some options that we can look at.
Good. So I did represent that you were actively looking. I think I used the word vigorously looking for members.
Very vigorous, yes.
Which they appreciated. Beyond that, I really don't have anything else to report that's not seeing that we're not doing anything. We're very busy, but nothing necessarily to report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisors' reports. Let's see, already covered planning and stormwater stuff. The Emergency Management Committee will be meeting here on June 24th, the first meeting in quite some time. That is all I have to report. Supervisor Lewis?
Yes, the AC met last Thursday and discussed a number of issues. One of them of importance is the tree plan for the 2024 Long Range Master Tree Plan and proposed fall planting. And also update on a Burr Town, Pennsylvania activities as well as finding additional possible open space locations. One item that they have asked about is, I know this has been an issue, is, is a proposed chicken ordinance, which I know has to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. They were asking the status of, of that. The Disability Advisory Board met the Wednesday before and we welcomed two new members to the meeting and started laid out and continue to work on 911 accessibility for folks as well as the brochure that the Disability Advisory Board provides for the community as well. That's all I have.
Thank you Supervisor Lewis. Supervisor Ross?
Yeah, the Historic Commission met last week and we just, they just finished up the historical building inventory list. That's going to help for the demolition ordinance that we were thinking about doing. So we'll probably have something for the board next month on that.
Good stuff. I know they're working hard on that one. Supervisor McCartney?
Yes, so the Park and Rec Board met last Tuesday, June 10th. There was two really nice projects that were presented by a Girl Scout, which is a project at Five Mile Woods connecting a small trail. The Park and Board, Park and Rec Board loved the idea. She did a really nice presentation and she's going to, she got greenlighted to do that. Also there was an Eagle Scout project at Gardner Reflection. There's some old foundation somewhere in that area and one of the Eagle Scout wants to kind of do a, a refurbishing or renovation of that area. It's pretty, it's pretty beat up. The Park and Rec Board did give approval on that as well, but they also wanted the Historic Committee to make sure that they were involved in that, to make sure that there wasn't any historical, you know, disturbance there. League agreements are still, we're waiting for Monica to come in with league agreements for all the leagues. YMS and PIA are both really pleased with the current grass conditions. Thumbs up to the township for that. Also LMFA is looking to run a weekly flag program for special needs children, 12 years and older at, I think either Macklesfield or, or Memorial Park. They haven't worked out the details of that. Again, I think the Park and Rec Board asked for some more feedback regarding the specifics of that. And then also LMFA is looking for some guidance on Memorial Park usage. As, as expected, it's escalated based on the number of players and it seems like they're now overtaking that area. So I think the Park and Rec Board is going to help direct, you know, the, the age-old question of field usage at Memorial Park as well as Macklesfield. So that's all I had.
Busy meeting. Thank you. Supervisor Blundy?
The only update I have is, and Maureen alluded to it, right, Peter Solar, who has been an active member of zoning of Patterson Farm, of EAC in the past, he's spent so much to so many, is leaving the township. You know, it's so sad. So we invite you all to try to fill Peter's shoes, many, and many hands to make some important work go forward. So maybe we should have like a Peter Day.
I think, you know, I got, I first met Peter serving with him on the EAC and then I recruited him to the zoning hearing board and then recruited him to the Patterson Farm and he stepped up and has done an amazing job. And anything we can do to add him on the back and say thank you would, would be good. He's done a great job for us. Item 13, discussion items. I don't think we have any today.
Um, we might.
Well, some other business maybe?
Is it about the business? Okay.
Yeah. Do you have something you'd like to add or you want me?
No, no, let's call it other business.
Sure. Let's go other business. Couple things. You know, our regularly scheduled first July meeting would be July 2nd, just for the holiday. And in looking at upcoming items that could be on agenda, it doesn't seem like there's much. So the board is going to be canceling the July 2nd meeting. So we'll be meeting once in July and July 16th. If anything does come up, we can always hold a special meeting, but at this time, it doesn't look like a July 2nd meeting will be necessary. So we'll say enjoy the holiday to everybody. So you don't have to come to public comment that night. And then one of the other items, just so everyone's, you know, we've been, some of the developments that we've seen sort of, I'll say in the news, but publicized in the township, some of the major ones cover multiple townships and one of which is the proposed development around the Shady Brook area. The Middletown portion of that, and I'm drawing farm view of something or other, I'm drawing a blank on it, has gone in front of the Middletown Planning Commission and is supposed to be going in front of the board of, their board of supervisors late, mid, late July, I believe?
In mid-July.
In July at their, at their meeting?
Yes.
So one of the, you know, obviously they haven't come before us yet for anything. We've heard, you know, we've seen what's been published on websites and talked about online and all that stuff, but we haven't had any sort of formal presentation here. I'm sure that must be upcoming. But one of the things that I saw in the plan that's on the Middletown website is that all, there's a single means of ingress and egress to their carriage home development, which has many, many homes to it, and it's only through Lower Makefield. So it's the main entrance to Shady Brook. They're funneling everyone through there and sending them to their homes in Middletown. So I think we'd like staff to issue some comments to the Middletown Planning Commission Board of Supervisors so that they know what our concerns are with that particular approach in that development. We don't normally comment on a neighbor's developments, but in this case, it's, everything is going on LMT roads. So we, we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing by our, by our residents and we're managing that accordingly.
Sure. We're happy to draft a letter for your review and then ultimate submission to, to Middletown.
Thank you. I'm sure, we can probably circulate that via email and.
Yep.
Make sure everyone gets input. So we get all of our comments in there for that. Any other, other busy, yes, sir?
Yeah, I was just going to say the, the board has empowered the township manager to fix the AC, just for the record. So just want that on the record.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah. And add that it's also affecting the police department. So it's not just us who are sweating with the oldies, but so get to it, please.
Sounds good. Will do.
Wondering what that glow was. Any other items? Moving right along. All right. Appointments to, reappointments to boards and commissions. I think we'll probably do that at our next meeting. We'll have a bunch. Additional public comment on non-agenda items if needed. This item 16, same as item five. If there's been a public comment on something that's not on the agenda, you want to say something, please come up to the dais, to the podium. Tell us your name and whether or not you're from Lower Makefield Township and please try to keep it to three minutes. All right. Oh, we have public comment?
Is this on?
Should be.
I'll just talk loud.
No, you have to speak.
You have to have to speak.
We're recording. Try that one. There's a little button you might be able to press on that one too.
Right.
Light turn on?
That work?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Hello, I'm looking for the guy in the back to give me a thumbs up. Looks like he is.
Well, it's green, so I think it's okay.
There he is. You're good.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tara Friedman. I'm the Chair of the HRC and you had asked me to come and give an update on what we're doing. So I'll keep it brief.
Sure.
We started meeting as a group informally to kind of get to know each other, to get more familiar with the ordinance and make sure everyone really understood the purpose in December. And then we had a presentation from the Regional Director of the Pennsylvania HRC out of Harrisburg telling us a little bit more about how this works at the state level. And we really just all needed some good education to understand the scope and, and really what we could be doing. Since then, we've been meeting monthly. We have our next meeting next week. We've been working on website content. So if you've been on the site, you've seen Kelly Frain has put up our mission, who we are, about us, different sections that we've worked on. We also are working on an inquiry and complaint form. And so what we're doing now is finalizing that and figuring out how do people actually complete it? Where do they find it? What happens to it once it's loaded? How do we keep confidentiality and things like that? And all of that seems to be background work that's taken us pretty much six months. And we still want to figure out what we want to be when we grow up. What are really the roles we can fill for the community, both in terms of educating the public on their rights in terms of non-discrimination and then reinforcing adjudicating any inquiries or complaints that do come up. That's what we've been up to. We have had some issues with attendance, just we seem to have some email miscommunications and basic things that bother us in 2025 and get in the way of communication. And so we are short one member. And so I think Kelly or Katie will be bringing that to you for consideration in the future.
Well, thank you for, for all the work you do. I know whenever you're starting something new, there's often growing pains, but I see you're getting through it and you're, you're working through it. So we appreciate all that hard work. And obviously the work that you do on the HRC is very important. Hopefully you don't have to do too much relative to adjudicating many things. That's our hope. But definitely interested in other things that the HRC could do from an educational perspective, outreach, et cetera. So I know you have a, a very, a very good liaison who will.
Yes, we do.
Help you out there. And we're looking forward to the work that you'll be doing in the future. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Any other public comment? All right. So with that, I will say the meeting is adjourned. Have a lovely evening and a good start to your summer and premature happy July 4th.